Good evening, everyone. And I welcome you to our first in-person meeting. We're glad to be back in person. As the county manager said, this is our only meeting for the month of July. So at this time, I will call Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll have invocation. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you call for it?
Yes ma'am. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
And Commissioner White?
I second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we excuse Commissioner Lawrence White. Are you ready for a question?
Ready.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will have invocation by Commissioner Mayor Perkins-Williams and pledge by Commissioner Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Dear Father, I, your humble servant, bow, asking you to thank us. Thank you, dear Lord, for your mercies. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for your forgiveness. Thank you for your understanding. And thank you for your directions and guidance. And most of all, for your love and understanding for these, your people, and your service. In all these things, I ask, in your name, to wrap us in your love, close to your spirit. All these things, I pray, for mankind, in your name. Amen.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are you ready for a question? Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will have our welcome the floor for public address to the board. Madam Chair, would you give us a very quick...
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Each speaker who has signed up to speak will be allowed three minutes to speak per person, and there will be pursuant to the procedure, a total of 30 minutes allotted for public addresses to the board. I will keep your time, and when the time arrives, that will be time to quickly complete comments. Also, as we always say, please leave all comments respectful or frankly in person.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. We have nine people signed up, and I guess our deputies will go back and get maybe the first three, or the first three. Kenneth Jones, Dr. Kenneth Jones, Jeff Thomas, if they'll come forward.
Unless they may be in the room.
Unless they're in the room? We need to go in the order in which they signed up. Kenneth A. Jones. Okay, Mr. Jones, come forward. If you'll come to the podium, please.
And before your remarks, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Whatever topic you'd like to speak on, if you'll be at the podium there, and you have three minutes, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kenneth Jones, here in Pitt County. The subject I run it to talk about was upon the monument that was taken down, but since that's not on the agenda, the other one is about vaccinations. I don't know what's going to happen. I want to hear a lot of the things that possibly, I understand that Mr.'s doctor...
Senator?
Yeah. And I don't know what he's going to talk on, or how he's going to do anything as far as the vaccinations concerned. I don't know, is there a mandate for that? But any time when you have vaccinations, normally, it's a volunteer from the people who are taking it, between them and their doctor. And that's the only thing I would say, anything more about that. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next we have Dr. Kenneth T. Jones.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Kenneth Jones, from Pitt County. I really came to the meeting tonight to kind of find out what's going on. You know, I was surprised when the statue was taken down at Pitt County Courthouse. I've been to the courthouse many times, and the statue never done anything to me. I didn't know anything about it till it was taken down. I don't understand why it was taken down. If we destroy everything in America that we don't like, we will no longer have an America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, in 53 years, I've never been to one of your meetings, and I'm learning a lot, you know, through the years. Seeing all this stuff is really sad in my heart. You know, growing up in high school, we played football, black, white, Puerto Rican, Mexican, didn't matter. We all broke candy bars, and put money together, and went to the movies. We all got along. We didn't talk about race issues. Just found out, my third-generation great-grandfather died in Confederate at Gettysburg. It's what you get when you study your history, after 53 years. And the monument is very important to me, on behalf of him. It's nothing to do with our color. My son's interracial. My wife's from Philippines, and we all love each other. And seeing my son, seeing this stuff on TV, is giving him mixed emotions at 25-years-old. And it's hard to explain things to him. And I just hope and pray that we all come to an agreement on these issues. It's nothing about our skin color. It's about what's in our hearts, and what God's given us. That's all I got to say.
A little more light up here wouldn't hurt. Good evening. My name is Jerry McCroy. I'm a taxpaying resident of Pitt County. Thank you for the opportunity to address you in person. My comments tonight center around the illicit actions of seven commissioners and the county manager. In June of last year, Commissioners Albright, Fitzpatrick, Floyd Huggins, McLawhorn, Nunley, Perkins-Williams, and Ward violated North Carolina law. You violated North Carolina General Statute GS 100-2.1, Protection of Monuments, Memorials, and Works of Art, by inappropriately voting to remove the Confederate monument that stood proudly on the lawn of our courthouse from 1914 until last year. County Manager Elliott violated the same law by ordering the implementation of your devious plan. There was no just cause for these actions, just political motivation. Let's recognize the current anti-Confederate smear campaign for what it always has been, a calculated political campaign to denigrate Southern heritage. Not only did you violate state law, you did so willfully and with premeditation. Our monument was gifted to the people of Pitt County by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. It was not gifted to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. The purpose of the monument was to honor the men of Pitt County who lost their lives defending the county of Pitt and the state of North Carolina during the war between the states. The primary monument inscription reads, "Our Confederate Dead." Were it not for those brave and selfless service, Greenville, Pitt County, and the eastern side of North Carolina may look very different today. In my opinion, to remove such a monument, honoring the sacrifice of our county's brave men is akin to going through a cemetery and destroying headstones. You have dishonored their sacred memory. Our monument was not a monument glorifying war, and certainly not promoting slavery. It exhibits a single, simple Confederate soldier with his weapon and his body at parade rest. He exemplifies a stand-down position. He is watchful, but not in an attack posture. I believe it is due to the people to ensure the elected officials abide by the laws of state North Carolina and hold them accountable. If they do not, since our Pitt County Sheriff has not charged you with this violation, the duty falls to the people that you serve. This evening, I call for the eight of you to resign your office. Thank you.
Okay, next we have William, it says Crutch? Crutch?
Well, as you already know, my name is William Crutch. I'm a concerned taxpayer, a concerned citizen, and I happen to have in my hand a paper right here that shows a contractor destroying the base of the Confederate monument that was not allegedly destroyed by the county. Now, there's a lot of questions that should be asked here. The first question, where is the paper trail that proves a credible safety, shall we say, a problem to the community? Where's the paperwork? That the taxpayers of Pitt County have not been told where their money has gone and what their money has done. And it appears to be that the Pitt County taxpayer is covering the tracks of these commissioners, and possibly some corrupt law enforcement in this area. Now, that may sound big, that may sound bold, but it's the truth. People, it doesn't matter whether you're white, black, gay, straight, Jew, Muslim, it doesn't matter. We are American. We are one people. And until we see past this division that has been incited by members of this board and in the community, we will never get past where we are now. There have to be some questions asked, and the people need to ask these questions. Why did they take down this monument? Why did you let them? Did they tell you, oh, it's to erase white supremacy? Oh, it's to erase racism? They've only made it worse. These progressive agendas that you are pushing, moving people in, free houses being bought up, government money being used to invade against the city of Greenville and Pitt County, don't think that we don't know about it. Don't think that we don't know about it, because it is happening. This cannot happen. And for this monument to be illegally and unconstitutionally taken down, I'm going to quote a speaker here coming up shortly, I hope you all go to prison for what you have done. May God have mercy on your souls. Thank you.
Boy, Jerry's right, it is poor lighting. Good evening, everyone. Marcus Carrichin here. Myself and so many others here tonight are here to represent and speak for many others across this county, this state, and the country. Many of our speakers from the western part of the state couldn't make it tonight, though unfortunately, too, because they had to attend another commissioner's meeting in Caswell County, while yet, were they doing, taking down another monument, unfortunately? And here we go again, trying to move another monument. Anyways, why is it that so many are in such a rush to remove these monuments, articles of history? So if people want to see them and ask a question, what's that all about? They can research it and have history to learn from, like Mr. Kenneth said earlier about learning from history. History is for us to use to learn from, a part to make wise decisions in our future. If we don't have that, I mean, how can we make wise decisions if you keep removing history? And then what happens then? Indoctrination steps in, comes into play, usually tied into communism slash socialism, whatever you want to call it. Now, as we all know, the Pitt County Confederate monument was removed illegally, and the bottom portion of it, like you mentioned a while ago, has been destroyed, as shown in, he had a picture, I don't know if he showed you a while ago, and there's pictures and there's videos of it. The decision to do this was made by seven county commissioners that did not obey North Carolina General Statutes 100-2.1. This monument does not belong to the county commissioners to do what they want with and think they are above the law. This monument belongs to the county. Who is the county? We, the people, are the county. We're the ones that funds the county. We pay the bills. We pay our taxes. Where is our voice in these matters and decisions? The county commissioners are working behind the scenes without the public, but with local SCV to put this monument in a place that is not legal. Local SCV knows this isn't legal, but they're doing it anyways. State SCV isn't partaking in this because they know it's not legal, and they actually have lawsuits in North Carolina and Tennessee right now. And supposedly, from what I understand, they're going to start having more lawsuits, just like Alabama's got monuments going up right now as we speak, $25,000, $1,000 fines, and they're also talking about adding on $10,000 a month fines every time these things are down. For being removed illegally. Yeah, okay. There's no excuse for a monument, why it can't be put back to its rightful place where it was stolen from. The Pitt County monument can only be temporarily removed for 90 days if something was physically wrong with it, where it had caused physical danger. That's the only way it could actually legally be removed. But there was nothing physically wrong with this monument. Actually, from what I understand, they blamed it on the George Floyd incident. Anyways, after repairs made in that 90 days, the monument is to be returned from where it came from, not the Pitt Palace that is not even on the Civil War Trail. The original location of this monument actually is in Greenville, was raided by, and looted by Potter's Union forces, so it's on the trail. Who is going to pay for the damages to this monument, long-term storage fees, the moving again, the setup process, the 99-year lease, et cetera? The taxpayers, again. This monument needs to be returned to its original home immediately. If commissioners do not comply, the seven commissioners that originally ordered it down...
Mr. Carrichin, you need to wrap it up.
...will have lawsuits and criminal charges put on them individually. Legal action is already being looked into. If you look online, you'll also find others with petitions against the monument going back up on 43. This is not good, because eventually, these people will tear it down, and then what will come of the monument then? Thanks a lot, everybody. Y'all have a blessed night.
Hello. I'm Michael Carrichin. I've been here a long time. I'm a Pitt County citizen, 77-years-old recently. Been around long enough to see what's gone on in Pitt County, and know what's gone on in Pitt County, in politics and everything else, because I've been in it. So I know what really goes on. I was born on the Jackson Farm, the old farm, by the oldest practicing doctor in the United States, Dr. Frisell. So the history goes way back. And the one thing I can tell you, I know about the monument. And I can tell you this. The county commissioners broke state laws, they broke federal laws, and under the state laws and federal laws, you should be in prison. There are talks right now of personally putting charges against you, not against the county, because the county would pay for your lawyer fees. No, personally, because you made personal decisions. And you based it on lies. Because anybody that looks up the history knows what the truth is. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm disgusted with all of yous. And I've never been disgusted with any of the Pitt County commissioners for my life. And I've been here 77 years. You don't deserve the whole deceits that you've got. You have disgraced this county, and the law enforcement that hadn't done their job has disgraced their profession. And as far as I'm concerned, the conversations that are going on right now to possibly prosecute you people, I hope they continue. Because I'm fed up with yous, along with everybody else. Do your jobs that you're supposed to do as county commissioners, if you know how. Obviously, you don't know how. And I know, because I've been in politics here, and I've known the county commissioners. You people have failed.
Good evening. I'm Curtis Forbes. I live at 8328 County Home Road, 8 North Carolina. I was born on the farm here in Pitt County. I'm a 1967 graduate of South Dayton High School, a 1971 graduate from North Carolina Central University. Served in the United States Army with one year of service in Vietnam. I have over 50 years of government and community service duties. Most recent was serving as the County of Duchess in New York, as the Duchess County Equal Employment Opportunity Officer. I'm here to propose that the County of Pitt have a 9/11 memorial to observe the 20th anniversary to remember and honor all victims killed in the September 11, 2001 attacks. In the program, there's a section for color guards. I think that it should include one representative from New York State Police, one Pitt County Sheriff Deputy, one Greenville Police Department representative, and to honor those killed at the Pentagon, one U.S. military personnel. I propose that all fire and police agencies be invited. The location of the event to be determined. I propose that all houses of worship in Pitt County be encouraged to chime their bells six times on 9/11, at 8:46 a.m., 9:03 a.m., 9:37 a.m., 9:59 a.m., 10:03 a.m., 10:28 a.m. I propose that after the ceremony is over, that there be a procession of honor with emergency vehicles from all departments, fire and police, in Pitt County. I lived in Poughkeepsie for over 40 years. In my capacity as the county EO officer, I've met many elected representatives, one of which was the mayor of the city of Poughkeepsie. She lost her husband in that attack on 9/11. Years later, we hired an employee to work in our public defender's office. She was in Tower 1 when the plane crashed into it. My friend Najuma worked with the New York State Insurance Fund in New York City. Their building was three blocks from World Trade. After the second tower was hit, they were told to evacuate. She heard the sounds of both buildings collapsing, like the sounds, like the buildings were screaming, she said. Fast forward. When I first moved here, I was pleased to learn of Mayor Allen Thomas 9/11 Memorial. I hear the sound. So in conclusion, I know that you have thinking about having a proclamation, and that there's possibly no money in the budget for this program, but as a county employee, which I retired in our job spec, was a phrase, does related work as required. So I say to you, we as individuals, we as a nation, under God, were forever changed. Thank you.
Last speaker is... Mr. President, Rick Mock. Mr. Not speaking? That concludes, unless there's anybody else in the room or in the building that had planned to speak tonight that's not signed up at this time? Chairwoman?
No others signed up to speak at this time. We will officially close the public address period. Thank you all, and thank you for us, to give us your opinion. At this time, ma'am, we will have a public hearing.
Yes, Kelly Henderson, come forward, our Director of Economic Development, for the Pitt County Department of Economic Development.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This public hearing is in reference to an economic development incentive for an active competitive industrial prospect, in an amount equivalent to 80% of the net increase in ad valorem taxes for real property over the base year for eight years, and 85% of the net increase in ad valorem taxes for personal property over the base year for four years. This incentive would be contingent on the investment of $154 million in real and personal property, and the creation of 290 jobs with an average salary of $67,400 over a five-year period. At this point, they would create the jobs over a five-year period. At this point, as this project, if one, will provide a variety of jobs well above the county average wage, and will enhance the tax base of Pitt County, the Pitt County Development Department respectfully asks for your approval of the proposed incentive. And if the project moves forward, authorize Chairwoman Floyd Huggins to execute the economic development agreement between Pitt County and the client.
You've heard the meaning of this incentive project for economic development, Project Lucky. Is now...
Thank you.
...the public hearing. It's now officially open to the public hearing.
Chairwoman, at this time, nobody's signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who wants to come forward and speak on this project?
Do we have anybody speaking?
They can speak for or against it either way. I believe there's nobody in the audience who's able to.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Kelly.
Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that the separate nations should approve this economic development.
It's been the executive family approved of the Project Lucky that was presented by Ms. Andrews. Are you ready for the question? Madam Chair.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick. Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn. Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will then move to, I just called the floor, and the first one is Sports Commission Introduction. Gary Williams is going to come through us and tell us all about being a Pitt County nonchalant sports commission.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, and County Staff. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I promise I will make this very brief. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Gray Williams. I'm the Executive Director of the Pitt County Sports Commission. Our goal is to bring travelers in for sporting tournaments by creating a positive economic impact in Pitt County through sports tourism. Numerous benefits come through the dollars travelers spend in Pitt County through our local businesses, restaurants, and hotels. Some larger upcoming events that are included in our county are the Pitt County Softball World Series that will showcase Pitt County on a worldwide platform. USA Lacrosse Tournament will bring in youth teams from all over the southeast region. The Adult Disc Golf Championship, which will bring in travelers from all over the United States, both professional and amateur, while we showcase the Aiden Disc Golf Course and the Farmville Disc Golf Course. The 65 and older State Championship Tennis Tournament hosted countywide utilizing over 40 courts in Pitt County. The Sports Commission, since its inception in 2019, has put over $25 million in economic impact for Pitt County, resulting in a tax saving of approximately $110 per county resident per year. Thank you all for your time this evening and letting me come introduce myself and put a face with a name. Your commitment to making our county not just a better place to live, but to travel as well. I look forward to setting up individual meetings with you all in the future and building relationships. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. And if you have any questions, we welcome this admission.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I believe Kelly's coming back with the Economic Development Report. This is Kelly's first report as a part of the department.
We are officially now the Pitt County Economic Development Department. Name is the same. Name is different, the mission is still the same. Span the tax base, create jobs, and help our existing industries, and all things with quality of life in Pitt County. So a tall order, but we are now at full staff. As of next week, we will be at full staff. We have hired Wayne Rollins, who is our Business Retention and Expansion Specialist, who is just at his 90-day mark, so three months with us. And then next week, we will have a Marketing and Recruitment Specialist. So back up to four in the Pitt County Economic Development Department and lots going on. So I wanted to give you, this report is going to be a year-to-date, as of July, the activity going on, and then monthly, at least to the end of this year, give you some different metrics of things that we measure, including announcements, jobs, initiatives, programs, collaborations. And so it might look a little different next month, but I wanted to give you some year-to-date stats. So recruitment. Well, basically, you see up there 700-plus jobs announced and 500 million-plus in investment announced. Now, that was in fourth quarter of 2020, so at the very end of 2020. So even with the COVID and even with the pandemic, we had some major announcements. 500 million of that, and the plus is a couple of others that are not nothing, but certainly the 500 million is the Thermo Fisher announcement in December. And that 500 of those 700 jobs is, or plus, is Thermo Fisher scientific. We're doing a lot of work to help them develop their talent pipeline, including $400,000 in workforce development support in collaboration with the NC Biotech Center and the Greenville ENC Alliance, ECU, PCC, Pitt County Schools, and other partners to develop that talent pipeline. But going forward, the next three rows you see, I want to go over some of the prospect activity just to let you know how those come in, where they come from. We have 41 project requests that we were able to respond to out of 57. That means that we were able to provide either a site or building, or we were able to complete a request for information, including maybe lots of other information, demographics, economy, that type of thing. Most of those were in manufacturing, but others were in our existing industry, which create a lot of our new jobs, actually, the majority of our new jobs. So seven of those were existing industry. We also have some in data centers, information technology, call centers, as well as non-manufacturing. We get requests for buildings for retail, commercial, nonprofits, for that type of project, as well as warehouse and distribution. Of those 41, 16 of those are active, meaning that we have not only submitted information or a site or building, but we have actually had additional correspondence. They've asked us more questions, they've come for a visit, or that we know that we are still in the running for that project. So there are 16 that are active. Again, we've got some in manufacturing, the seven you see in existing industry, most of those are manufacturing, so we've got about 10 of those in manufacturing, and then some of the others in the other categories. Now, the last one is 16 where we did not have a site or building to submit. In most cases, there's not a request for, oh, how great is your community? It's what's your site and building that will fit these certain parameters? So if we didn't have one, then we could not submit for 16 projects, which is over 1 in four of the requests, or 28%. So that's an issue that we are addressing, that we need to address. We have sites, but we do not have a whole lot of buildings at this point, and that's something we're working on. I mentioned Wayne Rollins has been hired as our Business Retention and Expansion Specialist. He's been helping us with those seven existing industry expansion projects, as well as making contacts with our existing industries. We're setting metrics for him, he's making reports, he is working on initiatives, as he has a lot of background in workforce development, working with the Mideast Commission for over 16 years. He has connections with our industries, with our allies and partners, and he is looking at new programming, revitalizing the whole business retention and expansion program because existing industry is such a critical asset to us and the backbone of our community and creation of most of our new jobs. If you'll move over to the next page, what we have there is our Technology Enterprise Center. We don't really talk about that a whole lot, but that is a business incubator. It started out as a technology incubator and still is, but there are various businesses in there. We have 11 tenants in there right now. This has been running for over 25 years. We get about $25,000 a month in rent. We have one pending lease. We have, again, 11 tenants and about 30 employees working in this building. We have done quite a bit of outfit to this building because it was an old textile building, new roof, new security system, rekeyed all the doors, putting new flooring in. There was a water leak in there because it is an old building, so we're doing quite a bit of outfit to this building. But it is producing entrepreneurial support in, you know, collaboration with many other assets we have in entrepreneurial support, the Miller School of Entrepreneurship, SBTC, the Pitt Community College Small Business Center. So this is our contribution to entrepreneurial support, and it has been churning out entrepreneurs for 25 years with about 70% capacity. But we also have the North Carolina Pharmaceutical Services Network working in there, which is oral solid dose training for our major industrial cluster, which is biopharma, and that serves Thermo Fisher, Main Pharma, as well as CMP Pharma in Farmville. Also, we are in the grant and sponsorship business. As Gray at the Sports Commission reported, we've got the Little League Softball World Series coming up. We've got the Emerald Loop Project. We have the Pirate Challenge with ECU. We have all these things in our community that are recreational, cultural, leisure activities, educational opportunities, and that all is the fabric of helping recruit industry to our communities. That is a placemaking effort, and that is very imperative to economic development efforts. So we do have small grants for our municipal partners. Farmville, Grifton, Aiden, Simpson are some of the sponsored projects for this fiscal year, as well as the sponsorships for the World Series and the Emerald Loop and other projects. So we do support those, and that, again, of course, helps us recruit. And also, we have, well, excuse me, the available sites and buildings, let's get back to that. So that prospect activity from the first sheet, we have about 40 buildings listed on the statewide database. Several dozen buildings. What we have a problem with is a lot of these do not fit the requirements of the requests. They have low ceiling height, they might be in the flood plain, they might, the project may require rail, and we don't have really rail-served sites or buildings, or other features of the building don't fit because of the age of the building or other aspects. So we have about four buildings that are over 50,000 square feet. That's a sweet spot for industrial projects, 50,000 square feet and bigger or larger. We don't have very many, and of those, they usually don't fit the requirements that are also listed. We do, though, have 750 acres of what we consider shovel-ready property across the county. That's in Farmville and Aiden and Greenville. And across the county, we have about 750 acres. 250 of these are certified, either through the electricity program or the NC Commerce Program, which is a big deal because these are, again, considered truly shovel-ready. Some of the other ones have some of the things, but not are officially certified. But we do have sites that are ready to go that could use a little help and push to get them to the point where they are truly prime property for development. We also have 140 acres that are county-owned, which is also of importance because a lot of projects do like publicly-owned property because they know that the price is set, that it's pretty much held at a good industrial rate, and that there might be opportunities for a package that go along with that. So we do have quite a bit of property, few buildings. We did sell our Indigreen Shell Building as of June to a project, and that is under outfit right now. We'll probably have an announcement later on that, but that has been sold. So that was our prime building. That was the building that fit many boxes, 50,000 square feet. It was expandable to 200,000 on 17 acres, and it fit a lot of boxes. Now, that's why we have 16 that we weren't able to respond to. We are looking at location, size, the parameters of that building, the different requirements, the ceiling height, whether to pour a floor, different things like that. We're looking at the financial structure. We're looking at the partners that will be a part of that project. We're looking at doing multiple shell buildings because we really need that product development. So that is ongoing, but we are really hoping to get that out of the ground in the fall. And once we do, as soon as that ground is broken, we can start submitting as a shell building in progress, or multiple shell buildings in progress. So we will be presenting more on that in coming months. And lastly, on incentives, we have closed out three NC Commerce Grants for Industrial Expansions. With your support, you gave us 5% match on these grants, which was what was required, or $20,000, which leveraged $400,000 in building reuse grants for three projects. And that resulted in $4 million total in industrial expansions in Pitt County over the past couple of years. They just closed out this year. Additionally, we have paid approximately $2 million in performance-based grants, which all of our incentives are performance-based this year, on multiple-year grants awarded for expansions such as Main Pharma, which was a couple of years ago, and Patheon, which is now Thermo Fisher, which was also a couple of years ago. But that's our payments that we made this year for those announcements. These incentives helped secure over $300 million in capital investment and over 900 jobs over that grant period. And again, I mentioned the biopharmac support of $400,000. And in addition, we do infrastructure, again, to help support the shovel-ready sites initiative, and that totaled about $150,000. So this report simply gives you the facts and figures. I'm happy to, at a later date, give you more details on this or as requested, but I wanted to give you those fast facts right now, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Kelly.
I want to ask a question.
I'm sorry, sir, the Board of Commissioners are, we don't take questions from the audience. Unless the board chair were to recognize you. She said no.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the department would also be working on commercials, some maybe smaller interviews or some kind of commercial of properties, not just industrial.
Commercial properties? It really, again, that's all part of the evaluation process, but for right now, what we are focusing on are the industrial properties, to do industrial shell buildings. The commercial property is not in industrial parks, which is where we're focused right now. That's a little bit more of a bigger endeavor. It's not something we could not, you know, do, but it's not something that this particular project is focused on.
The reason I brought that up is because a lot of the municipalities and outrunning areas, the communities need something to support their families in service and in commercial seem to be what is needed. So if you're not gonna...
So, yeah, industrial spec is kind of, it's something where you can do things on spec. Commercial and retail is a different animal. It's, you know, that is more, we would, if you, if, again, if we were charged to do so, that's something where we could go out and recruit retail and commercial, and that's something, certainly something we could be charged to do. But to build those buildings on spec is not necessarily something that we do in economic development.
Would you say, Kelly, to be charged with that, is that direction from this board?
It would be direction from, yes, this board.
Is under the impression that there would be something? I said, I was, the reason I asked the question is that I was under the impression that there would be some commercial recruitment.
Well, and that's absolutely in, you know, our current strategic plan was as it was before July 1, when we became the department. That's certainly something up for this board to discuss.
The board may would consider discussing, and you have your board retreat at some future point. Not to say that you could have it added to the next agenda as a formal item as well, but the retreat might be a more appropriate place to review their strategic plan and see how you would like to have that tweaked or adjusted. Because their strategic plan is the plan that was overseen by the former Pitt County Development Commission, which is now no longer in existence. You are now a third board, per se.
Well, I was under the impression at the time, it went from the Industrial Development Commission, that when it came to a department, that there would be some consideration with commercial, outlining a municipality.
Yeah, saying that she's open to that.
Yeah.
But seeking the full direction of the board, the majority of the board.
Thank you.
Our next item of the agenda is to hear from our public health director. He will give us an update on the community vaccination program. And Dr. Sinner, before you begin, to the public.
And Dr. Simmons, before you begin, to the public community.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, citizens. Want to start out by reviewing a concerning report that was published a couple of Fridays ago. This report dealt with the mental health consequences of COVID-19 on public health staff. On June 25, 2021, the CDC published a report detailing results of a mental health study conducted on the public health workforce. The results were alarming enough that the CDC hosted a hastily put-together webinar to address the issue prior to release of the report. It was not called an emergency webinar, but essentially was an emergency webinar to review the results of this study with public health leaders and public health representatives across the nation. Between March 29 and April 16 of this year, the CDC surveyed public health workers from state, territorial, tribal, and local public health workforces regarding mental health symptoms in the workforce. Pitt County Health Department employees participated in this program. This was cascaded down from national organizations to the state, to locals, and then out through our workforce from us as supervisors. We do know that our employees participated in this study as well. 26,174 individuals responded to this survey, pretty large sample. The following results were obtained. 53% of respondents reported at least one mental health condition in the preceding two weeks, one symptom of a mental health condition in the preceding two weeks. Depression, 32%. Anxiety, 30.3%. Post-traumatic stress disorder or PTSD, 36.8%. And what was really alarming was that 8.4% of public health workers had suicidal ideation during the study timeframe. The highest prevalence of these symptoms were among those less than or equal to 29 years old, so are younger members, and transgender or non-binary individuals. Public health workers who are unable to take time off during the pandemic response were more likely to report adverse mental health symptoms. The severity of symptoms increased with increasing work hours and increasing percentage of time dedicated to COVID-19 response activities. If these numbers apply to the Pitt County Public Health Department, looking at us with a nominal employee number of 125 full-time equivalents, 11 of my employees had suicidal ideation during the timeframe of the study. The 10.5 in parentheses is the raw number. It would round out to 11. Depression occurred in 40 of my employees, anxiety in 38% of my employees, and PTSD in 46% of my employees. Some of my staff, even prior to this study, had mentioned they had what they considered PTSD from our testing operations last summer, conducted in the heat and under a lot of pressure initially for staff who were assigned to those operations. These numbers are very concerning. The report was shared with my board chairman and Dr. Garrison, longtime emergency medicine physician who serves on our Board of Health, county manager and deputy county manager, Mike Taylor, who is our liaison to the management team, Ms. Dickerson, my human resource officer, Ms. Hardy from our county human resource office, with my Pitt County Health Department management team, and with my staff directly with an appeal for me to seek help if they were having symptoms. Throughout the pandemic, we have periodically sent out information regarding our EAP program. As with most employers, the utilization of our EAP program is low, but we do continuously or periodically remind our staff that that is available. I have also recently begun including information for Dr. Lamson's program. She's a family therapist at ECU and has an outpatient clinic, and we have included that information for employees who wish to seek services outside of our county-available EAP program. And I will be reviewing the study directly with our staff at our general staff meeting next month. But wanted to share that information with you. No specific ask, but the toll, you've heard me talk before about the toll the response has taken on the public health workforce. The CDC study seems to support that from a mental health standpoint. Want to share a couple of staffing updates with you. Again, this affects our ability to operate as a health department. We had a long-tenured employee resign from our onsite wastewater program. Onsite was already short-staffed. We have reposted the position. We did, we were granted two new positions in onsite in the budget this year. We are advertising for those as well. Stress is high in this program. There has been a building boom in Pitt County with many developers seeking subdivision lot approvals for septic and other private residence construction seeking onsite approvals for septic systems. We continue to struggle in our onsite program from a staffing standpoint. In our nursing program, my communicable disease supervisor gave us her resignation recently. She will be gone effective July 30. This will be a very difficult position to fill. Finding someone with communicable disease experience and management experience is very hard in the public health workforce. We are working at this time to rebalance clinical supervision within our personal care division and try to manage the span of control for our nursing supervisors so that they have an appropriate number of direct reports underneath them. We were granted two new nursing positions in this year's budget, and we are advertising for those as well. We have begun splitting some of these positions, feeling that part-time coverage is better than no-time coverage. With that may come a duplication, paying for benefits for two employees instead of one, so we will make up for that with reduction in other areas in personal health if we do split more positions. We tried this with a couple of supervisory positions to get experienced folks in the door, and again, we felt that some coverage was better than no coverage. Want to move on and talk about vaccinations. Vaccine demand remains low. In one eastern North Carolina review, the uptake was about 1 in 20 individuals accepting vaccination. Vaccine is available every day, with or without an appointment at the Health Department. We welcome appointments. If individuals want to make an appointment, they can make an appointment and come in for that appointment. Individuals are also welcome to walk in and receive vaccine on a walk-in basis at the Health Department. Vaccine is available from many providers across the county. Vident continues to provide vaccinations. Most of the pharmacies in town offer vaccination at this point. ECU Physicians offers vaccinations at this point. So it is broadly available in the community. There really, at this point, are no supply issues. There are demand issues for the vaccine. We continue to look for opportunities where we can provide vaccine to those wishing to receive it. We've done a number of pop-up clinics and promoted clinics around the community. Again, uptake at those has been poor. We had a joint operation with Beaufort County Health Department at Triumph Church out on 264, hoping to reach people, and we could argue maybe the timing was off, being a kind of a midday event. But between the two health departments, we gave three vaccines that day. At some of our other operations, our vaccines have been single digits in terms of uptake. To date, the good news is we've given over 12,000 vaccinations at the Health Department. That's a pretty good number. I'm not sure we would have said, looking at this in December, that we'd be at 12,000-plus vaccines by this time in the campaign. We are planning to have a pop-up operation at the Concert on the Commons this week, and again, we do continue to look for opportunities to give vaccine where it is able. Nope, there's no identification required. If they are not.
[inaudible].
Mm-hmm. Yep, there's no requirement for ID, no proof of citizenship or anything like that. A person who presents and wants vaccination can be vaccinated. The only rub in that would be someone seeking a booster shot. We do need to confirm where, when the first shot was given, which manufacturer's vaccine was given, because at this point, we are not allowed to cross vaccines for boosters. And we want to make sure that they're given at the appropriate interval. But, yeah, there's no requirement other than presenting and seeking the vaccination at this time. Due to the technical limitation, I won't be able to review the dashboard with you tonight because the control for the slides is not with me. I will tell you that a little over 76,000 individuals in the county have received at least one dose of vaccine. We are a little over 72,000 individuals in the county who are fully vaccinated. As a percentage, it's 42% of the county is partially vaccinated, 40% of the county is fully vaccinated. When we look at this on an equity standpoint, we have closed the gaps somewhat with African-Americans. At one point, we're almost 9% behind. We are now 8% behind with African-Americans. That seems to be a steady, we have not been able to move that needle with African-Americans. At the state level, it's been a five or six-point gap at the state level with African-Americans. With Hispanics, we have closed the gaps with Hispanics. They are 6% of the Pitt County population, and they have received 6% of the vaccinations. So we have been able to close that, but they're smaller in numbers than African-Americans who represent 37% of Pitt County as a proportion. So we're happy age-wise, well-distributed age-wise, actually a little over-distributed in the younger age group, and the uptake in our senior citizens was very good, very, very good. COVID data, going to show you, this was numbers I presented to the Board of Health in May. At that time, we'd had 524 cases over the past 14 days. That was 37.4 cases per day. We were at 2.8 cases per 1,000 residents in the county. We were riding a little bit of our spring wave and still increasing at that point. Our total cases were 19,000 and change, about 10.6% of the population. And our estimated recovery, also 19,000 and change, about 96.8% of our cases recovered at that time. We had accumulated 87 fatal cases to that day, and our case fatality rate was at 0.4 at the low end of our range of 0.4 to 0.7. Percentage of tests returning positive at that time was 8%. Our numbers today, and my slides had to be in on Friday, so I could not put these in the presentation for today, but if we go to the, I'll give you the blank slide. Over the past two weeks, we've had 258 cases. It's about 18.4 cases per day. We're at 1.4 cases per 1,000, so about half of where we were in May. Even though our cases are currently rising, we're still about half of where we were in May of this year. Total cases to date, we are 20,799. That's 11.2% of the population in Pitt County. Our estimated recovered, 20,445. That's 98.3% of our cases are considered recovered at this time. I think that's a fantastic number. Our fatalities have risen to 96 and have been stable at 96 for the past three or four weeks now. That's a good thing. Our case fatality rate is at 0.5, which is probably the most common point that it has been, with an unrounded number of 0.46, so just above the threshold to be rounded to .5 versus .4. And our percent positivity is 8.8%. And I was talking with our state liaison today. While our testing numbers are still pretty good, we do, somewhere's between 2,000 and 4,000 tests per week in the county. During the height of the pandemic, we were doing 6,000 to 8,000 tests a week in the county, some weeks even a little bit more. The sample size is not weighted, the average is not weighted by sample size, as far as we know. And so if there's a light day in testing but a high number of positives, it shifts our positivity that direction. So if I test 10 people and five of them test positive, my percent positivity is 50%. If I test 100 people and I have five positives, my percent positivity is 5%. So that rolling average really should be weighted by sample size, and this time, we don't believe that it's being weighted by sample size at the state. So that may be affecting why that number is a little bit higher than it was. I do want to share this graph with you. I know I've shown this to you before. I think I've got a laser pointer. Do I have a laser? Yes, I do. So the blue is our folks who don't live in nursing homes or congregate living settings. This orange or salmon color at the bottom represent cases that have occurred in nursing homes or congregate living settings. Vaccine came in the middle of December, so 12/5, 12/19, around, and here's where vaccines started to be administered in that population. First booster, middle of January, and by the beginning of February, we really have just not seen cases in the residence of nursing homes. We are still seeing some cases in unvaccinated staff, but the uptake in residence was very, very good, and we are just not seeing very much activity in the residence of the nursing homes themselves, who are very high-risk patients. So again, I think that's great news. It's a testament to the effectiveness of the vaccine. I get asked often, what are the numbers in terms of those who get COVID after the vaccination? We know that there are some individuals who get infected after vaccination. We don't have a hard number on that. The state is tracking hospitalized individuals who were vaccinated and those who have died who were vaccinated, but they have not released numbers on that yet. We suspect that those numbers are fairly small, though. Overall, the vaccines are safe and well-tolerated, and they are available, so we would encourage folks to get them. And again, due to the way the program's set up tonight, I can't review the data dashboard with you. If any of you are interested in that, talk to me, and I'm happy to do that on a 101 basis or a Zoom with you all and review that. And that's the end of my report for tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Dr. Simmons' report is for report only.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Well, who can to, to leave him always coming to work? Cam?
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and all the Commissioners. It's good to see you all in person this evening. Been a while since we've seen each other. It's good to be here with you. This is a good news item. I'll explain a little bit about it. Our Building Inspections Department recently completed a survey, and it is done by the Insurance Services Office, and it is an Insurance Services Office Building Code Effectus Grading Schedule Survey. So that's a pretty long word there, a pretty long title, but that basically, in essence, is a survey they do of the services that Pitt County provides through our Building Inspections Department for residential and commercial construction. There's a list of questions, several, many pages long. Our chief building inspector, Reggie Satterfield, completed this and submitted it, and we just received our new grade ratings. These ratings are used for the insurance policy covers and agencies to utilize as they wish, as far as preparation for natural disasters that may impact the county. These affect certifications that have been given this past year, as well as when insurance policies are renewed. The initial, well, not the initial, but this is done about every five years. In 2016 was the last time that this survey was completed by the county. Due to the state not having an updated building code books for construction, basically, all counties and municipalities within the state were hit with higher ratings. At that time, the county was graded a nine in residential and a nine in commercial. You want those numbers to be low. The lower the number, the better the rating. So since then, the state manuals have been updated, the code books have been updated, and as a result of the survey done for Pitt County, our rates have dropped to a four residential and four commercial. So this will result in savings for owners of property, for their property insurance. So it's a good news item. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have in relation to it, sort of for reports.
Thank you, Dan. We have no action on that. Thanks for your appearance from San Juan Tax Collector. He's going to give us the June tax collection report.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Manager Elliott. Tonight, I bring you the June 2021 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 99.45%. The rate one year ago for real and personal property was 99.42%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available, made available through the North Carolina General Statutes. It's my recommendation to approve the June twenty twenty-one tax collection report as presented.
If there are no questions for Mr. Crew, I will undertake a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved to second that we approve the June twenty twenty-first tax collection report as presented. I have ready a question. Madam Chair.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe you're going to report now on the annual settlement of taxes since we did twenty twenty-one.
That's correct. After July one, two thousand and twenty-one, and before being charged with taxes to collect during fiscal year twenty twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, the tax collector is required to give him a sworn statement to the Board of Commissioners as the annual settlement of taxes in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one oh five, three seventy-three A. List of unpaid accounts are available for public inspection at the tax office and clerk's office. It's my recommendation to the board to approve the annual settlement of taxes for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, as presented.
If there are no questions, I undertake a motion to approve.
So, Madam Chair.
It's been moved to second that we approve the report as presented. I make a question, Madam Chair.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the next report. Manager Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First item is your meeting dates for the month of August. We'll be meeting on the second and fourth Monday of the month versus the person third due to the NCA-CC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, and this will be at six P. M. Book meetings at six P. M. And we have this scheduled for this meeting room, once again, for in-person meeting here at the Mark W. Jones Jr. Auditorium. Didn't want to point out that in your Eugene James Auditorium, we have set that up now with Plexiglas bearers. I believe we have some pictures. I'm not sure if you can see it very clearly, but we've put Plexiglas between each of the Commissioners. The DSS Board used this last week and seemed to be able to function pretty effectively with it. So you really have the option to continue to meet out here or you could go back to the auditorium. One of the issues of meeting out here is that we are not able to broadcast live on Sunday, Channel thirteen. We are broadcasting over YouTube right now, but the Channel thirteen broadcast will be done at a later time. Also, some of the data sets that Dr. Silvenell was mentioning, he couldn't pull down or we have to pull down, we have out here. One other issue of meeting out here is all the equipment that's got to be left out here by our new PIO staff. So I bring it up to you guys, an option to think about, if you would like to go back to the auditorium, you could. We could socially distance the chairs in the audience, like we're doing here tonight. And that way...
Is that something that we can ask the Commissioners to put out to our hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just saying something about the sound. You hear the echo?
Yes.
And whatever, and I think it'll be better, I mean, in my own, over there.
This is the system. We go back to, go back home?
Yes. Okay. Back to you.
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, if it's appropriate, I'd also like my motion that we get back to our meeting time, so we can just have a six P. M. meeting and a nine A. M. meeting.
So the first meeting of the month used to be nine A. M., and the second meeting would be six P. M. Under that standard?
Yes, I thought that number mentioned, we got that to what we're doing as far as time is concerned. It helps, one thing, I mean, I think we're all used to it, it's going very well, but it helps for the people who work in every county offices, that if they have a presentation to make, they're in the building, please, for our meeting, just know at work at that time, and then they'll come back out at night if they have to.
Madam Chair, since we have Lauren White, who asked for this initially, she's absent tonight, I would ask that we not vote on that at this point.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Say that again.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'll send you in.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded.
I think...
I mean, to interrupt, sorry, just, we wouldn't need to catch it, it's a substitute motion, because I don't believe the first motion got seconded, so it would be a second, if it's just an alternative motion.
I think we might want to mention more, we might want to expand a little bit more, if you care to, why you want to go back to more, we're going to be looking at employees. Well, that was, I think, one of my main reasons, but that motion is no longer in the mix, and we can talk about it, you know, after we get back up there later, and all that, please go into this, I motion. All right, I think we have motion number four, to go back to our original standing. Are you ready for the question? Madam Chair.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I mean, I continue.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Item B on the, my report, glass recycling, I don't think this really needs much of an update. There's been plenty of press on this, news releases, newspaper, maybe even some television coverage, but we are collecting glass at the six sites, the primary six convenience sites of the fourteen. The metal containers are in order for the other eight. Right now, Pitt County citizens, your only option right now is to take glass to those sites. It is a, what we call a single-stream collection method. You cannot, and we repeat that word, cannot, should not, be putting this in the blue recycling containers within the city of Greenville. If you do, you're contaminating the commingled recycling stream. So we will continue to get that message out, but the good news is, we are recycling glass again. Took a large amount of glass out there a couple of weekends ago, and the container's already getting pretty full, so just glad to reiterate that fact.
And and this is for all the citizens of Pitt County, but I do want to say that the citizens in Greenville will need to take their glass to one of the sites in the county because the city does not have a glass recycling container at at even one of their sites.
That's that's correct. City, city residents ask Pitt County residents would utilize one of it. This six soon to be one of the fourteen sites, and it's all fourteen are open and operating. Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner Nunley has his hand up. Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott had a couple of Greenville residents reach out and ask the question whether or not, if the city were to provide collection, single-streamed for glass, if if they would be able to, would the city be able to dump those into our, our bins?
We would, I would more likely, we'd want it to be a yellow, a yellow collection. We'd be happy to give them a container, and we'll come and pick that container up with glass and take it to the recycling company we're working with.
So the city could pay for and provide that for their residents as a single-streamed curbside collection, if the city saw that?
Yes. Well, I think we even offered to pay for the cost of putting a container on, i.e. Public Works property, but the city's declined at this point in time to take us up on that offer.
So if it would be an inconvenience for the citizens of Greenville, that they do not have a convenient container to put their glass in, you decide that?
That is correct. And again, it is single-streaming, and you cannot, should not put it in the commingled recycling container that people roll out to the street. Item C, just wanted to mention the food insecurity report that was published by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. The board chairman, president, Ronnie Smith, this was his initiative for this past year. Our chairwoman, Ann Ford Huggins, said on his committee, the Commissioners received a copy of the food insecurity report. You heard from our own lead group a couple of meetings back about food insecurity in Pitt County. I just wanted to point that out, that that report has been published and is available. Item D, quickly, just wanted to make a good news announcement, that Pitt County has received and become a top-ten winner in what is called the two thousand and twenty-one Digital County Survey. In our population category, we were five out of ten, just showing how we are, this is in the Center for Digital Technology, how from an IT standpoint, information technology, we're on the cutting edge, and how this is a positive for Pitt County. Madam Chairwoman, that's all ahead.
I would like to add a statement about the food insecurity. I hope you will, will move back to open and read the papers, and because access to food will continue to be, be in a reason to make, so that we can maintain the drive in the community, so access to, access to food is very important, so we're working on that report, so we hope that, that we can enhance our program here in Pitt County and finds the gaps in the way that we distribute food here in Pitt County.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention, I think this follows up on Commissioner Perkins-Williams' comment about our development, that if we could get development people to think about ways of incentivizing grocers in the rural areas. I think that the food insecurity is a major issue for people in this county. We don't have, our public transportation certainly don't have other ways of getting there, and I think that it would be really nice of this board to charge Kelly and her group with at least looking into the possibility of incentives for grocers or food providers to go into some of the rural areas. They're probably not, not provided by grocers. Thank you for your comments and for all the work on that, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I offer the motion that we accept the consent?
A second.
If we're at that point.
It's been moved to second that we approve the item of consent. Are you ready for the question?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We're now at items for discussion, we have one item from the day of, of our compensation survey, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So the, the county has not, in terms of the salary compensation survey, especially the county Commissioners, looked at this in my closer twenty years in Pitt County, so practically, I think we have looked at maybe some of the other boards and commissions. The chairwoman asked staff to conduct a, a survey of our comparable counties, as well as our close proximity counties, in terms of what board compensation is, what is for the Commissioners, or all of the other boards, ABC Board, Board of Health, DSS, Planning Board, so and so forth, Board V and R, and you have that data presented to you. We've given this to you earlier in a weekly info packet, and it's been subsequently, what you have in front of you here is the most up-to-date that we have. We've done some averages of, we've averaged up the comparable counties, taken the pit out of the, the mix of the counties in terms of what compensation is for the board Commissioners, whether it's the chair, the vice chair, the regular members, and then we also include whether they receive the travel allowance, and you have the same data set for all these other boards and commissions. So the intent of this is to present this as information, and as I'm seeking any input or direction from the board, if you would like to see a recommendation be brought back to establish based upon this data, an increase in any of these different boards and commissions. Madam Chairwoman, you may have to comment to me after that.
Yes, I did ask staff to compile this, because, you know, it has not been looked at in over twenty years, and that includes standards for boards that, that citizens are, as well as Commissioners, serve across this county. So each one of you have opportunity to, to look at the information, and if you have any suggestions for that, I would like to thank you, Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Manager Elliott, for pulling this together. I'm glad to see this is an item for discussion. I think it's a, maybe it's a uncomfortable discussion that any board has to have, but it's a, you know, I don't think any, any public servant gets into it that, you know, to make, make a big salary, but given that the Madam Chair brought this to my attention, this hasn't been looked at for quite some time, and in particular with our boards, and the chairperson, as our counties grow, the demands on service and materials boards and commissions necessarily grows, and I think it's important that we, as a board, and I'm not necessarily advocating one position or the other, but I do think that it's important that we professionalize these boards as much as possible, attract the best quality talent that we can possible for these boards and in our commission. I hope that the next person that serves in my seat is a better candidate for the position than myself, and I think a big part of that, we have to acknowledge, is what, you know, what the market, what the market is for the type of work. And in looking at, looking at the counties, and I don't want to apples and oranges, I think that primarily what's glaring to me is that we do not compensate our chair more than we do the other Commissioners, where our chairs are equal amongst the board, but I think that anyone serving that role, there's a considerable amount of responsibility that comes, and a considerable amount of time that comes to that role. So I think it's, I personally would like to see us discuss an increase on, on the chair, chair role, as well that the individual serves in the chairpersonship, and, and I also think that it would just make common sense to start to kick around, you know, a percentage increase on what, what the Commissioners could get us gradually, physically responsible in a manner, so that we're not increasing the tax burden on our citizens, but that we're gradually getting us where we're able to give people that want to run to public office, in particular if they're professional, willing to be able to make that, that calculation, whether or not they're able to serve. I think there's an equities argument to be made as well, if, if compensation package for boards and our general commission remain too low, then it guarantees that certain segments of the population should not be able to serve. So again, not that anyone's out to make a living on the salary they make, but, but also, but I do think that we need to be mindful as stewards of the next generation of leadership, that we want to make that job a little bit easier to get better people in the seat. So I think it's a worthy conversation to have for a board, and I'd like to, I would personally like to see us, you know, address certainly the chairpersonship compensation package, and then look at a percentage maybe of the Commissioners, and then on travel, as a freshman on the Commission, I recently just went to my first NACO conference, and noticed that a lot of leadership positions at NACO... the chairpersonship, um, compensation package, and then look at a percentage maybe on the commission. And then on travel, um, as a freshman on the commission, I recently just went to my first NACO conference. And I noticed that a lot of leadership positions at NACO, um, were from people that, that were from counties across the country where yearly their membership goes to this conference. Um, and I think that it would also be worthwhile allowing the full membership of our commission if, if they really want to attend, uh, the national conference of association that, that we, that we would, we would grant that, um, allowance. And I think that, these are just some of the ideas that kind of circulated with me is just considering this, um, based on conversations with the chair, also just reflecting to everyone. And not, I know I'm talking a long time, I'll shut up, I promise, but, um...
I don't even know what you're saying.
But the, um...
(laughing).
But I also think, as, as, as we're, as we're approaching, um, as we're approaching the transition in our management team as well, um, I think it's really important that we keep in mind, um, the manager's office and those that work directly with us, um, and to make sure that, that burden, um, necessarily where the transition will be, um, it'll be a difficult one, um, since we have veterans stepping down after really exemplary service. Um, the team that's directly surrounds, facilitates us working with the county and departments, I think it's, um, I don't know when the last time that we looked at, um, you know, or even asked, you know, but, but I think it's important that if we're going to have this conversation about the board, um, our commission and the boards that, that serve and advise the board, that we really make it a holistic conversation to the entire, the entire team, even if it's somewhat uncomfortable talking about it. You know, it's patient.
Um, if it's a breakthrough in the first, we go to the first, if we want to, if we need to bring them on to the next, we can come back and some, whatever, maybe get a workshop, some idea, perhaps a trip up and down, and we need to be, you know, in the open, in the time, and then, um, probably, just, um...
Well...
That pretty much do it, but I, I think it would take a matter of...
Well, I don't know. I was, I was hoping to lean on our, um, management staff that, that really works with a lot of counties and probably understands better how other counties handle this. Um, I'm, I'm not supposed to give, but, yeah, but, but I don't think that it necessarily needs to be, I certainly don't want to be the commissioners that drives it, um, because I think it should be a conversation that we all just have a honest conversation.
Well, they get something to do with that, that board's job.
Yeah, I think it's...
Madam Chair, if I may comment, if one of the NACO conferences that I went to is, I was sitting next to a lady that was from Dallas Fort Worth, and she asked me, she said, "Well, what do you get compensated?" And I said, "Well, it's about $13,000." And she said, "A month?" So I said, "No, a year." And I said, "What's yours?" She said, "165,000 plus she has to stay up five." The point is, is that when you start looking at who travels to all these things and from other states and other counties, it's not apples and apples.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Uh, Madam Chair, I have, we saw you on that position, all, all right, all, I changed my, uh, the, a lot of chairs, the chairmanship, because I have the chairman of certain, uh, members who either, or to me, turn, I can't agree with them, I can't, uh, talk, uh, that would allow some consistency and, uh, some experience throughout the change of, uh, the chairmanship. So I think if I do a discussion of the compensation, then they do a consideration of the, uh, such thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It seems like we dragged.
Yes. I, I couldn't because, uh, Commissioner McLaughlin said, uh, he didn't make a motion. Nobody said, you know?
No, I guess, I guess we need a motion to request, um, staff to, to, I guess, engage, you know, in proposed...
So we can bring back a recommendation if that's the board's desire.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what I want to act, put in the motion, but...
Yes.
Is that in the board policy?
Okay, so I'll, I'll move that, that with input from, from the commission, for the discussion, that, that staff, um, take under advisement of the proposed, um, restructuring and revisit of compensation package for the boards and the commission.
Would you consider that, that also add investigation into the service, whether it could be for you or not, that you do what, uh...
You, you have a two-year option for the chair today. It takes a supermajority vote versus a submajority, but you, your rules procedure do allow that.
I'm ready.
Yeah. One other, one other point I wanted to make was on the board compensation. Anytime we do a cost of living for the regular workforce, the board commissioners' compensation is increased at the same time with the right, right sign amount, percentage.
Well, are we, is that in the board policy?
No, ma'am. This is, this is why this has been brought to you tonight.
So that's the last one.
This is, this is my question.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, that staff will, uh, come back with a recommendation. Okay. Are you ready for the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
No.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes sixty-two.
Thank you. Uh, we are now at items for decision. Uh, the NACO, um, the National, uh...
Statistician.
State Association Conference is, um, coming up and we need to elect the bill that , uh, Madam Albright? I'd like to, Albright, um, the devil, McLaughlin, second, you ready to put that in?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that, uh, McLaughlin, the, uh, the devil, are you ready for the question? Madam?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next item, they, uh, get solar, uh, we will have the slows coming to us, we'll talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, good to be with you tonight. Um, one of your few face-to-face meetings we had out here over the past year or so, we dealt with this particular solar farm. At that point in time, it was considered a conditional use permit, and we'll talk tonight about a special use permit time extension. Hopefully, here we go. So, um, as you may recall, last September, we dealt with a rather large solar farm that was proposed just to the east side of Bethel, and I'll show you a map in just a minute to reorient yourself with that. Uh, tonight, the formal request is for a six-month extension to complete certain environmental aspects and analysis to make sure that this, um, particular plan moves forward. So first, just to look at, um, the area, any, this is, um, town of Bethel, the extraterritorial jurisdiction here, basically about a mile outside its corporate limits. And then there are several parcels just outside of here. These are all to be included in the proposal that was approved back in September of last year. Remember, this is about 40% of the land area total that was included in the proposal, so the bulk of it is in, within the ETJ of this, uh, town of Bethel. Um, you may remember, we went through a number of ordinances back, um, a couple of months ago due to some changes in the state legislation. That has caused all our conditional use permits to move into a special use category. And in turn, um, this particular one is now Class 1. So all the requirements, all the conditions that were attached to this particular special use permit or conditional use permit is now all encompassing in this particular, uh, request tonight. It still runs with the land. Part of our zoning ordinance deals with these time extension requests, and so there are three criteria that we need to, uh, consider in, uh, the request tonight. The first is, the permit has not expired yet. The original permit was for one year. The permit recipient has proceeded with, uh, good faith. We believe that to be the case. And there are a number of analyses that have already been completed, but given the size, given the amount, environmental, um, analysis that needs to take place, that has taken longer than a year. And the conditions have not substantially changed for this particular type of development. All said, um, these extensions can be requested more than once, uh, all for a period of six months. Uh, this particular permit is ready to sunset as of September the 14th, and, um, staff has met with the petitioners for this particular request. We believe they have followed through in good faith, and we are suggesting tonight that the board consider this motion to approve the request for this six-month extension. With that, Madam Chair, that's our report tonight. I also wanted to recognize Linda Winicki with our, uh, petitioner. She's here in the audience if you do have any direct questions about, uh, the special use permit.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request.
A second.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins? Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
No.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, the Employee Service Recognition Program Amendment, order party, our HR director's coming forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Um, what you have before you is a request to amend our Employee Service Recognition Program. Currently, um, when each, an employee reaches their five-year milestone, they receive a certificate and a lapel pin, and then we invite them to a reception. What we're proposing to change this to is at five years, at their first five-year milestone, they still receive a lapel pin, but once they hit 10 and 15 years of service, we start providing leave time to the employees at the rate of 16 hours for 10 and 15 years. The big change for us would be the recommendation at the 20-year, um, five-year milestone. Currently, today, an employee is allowed to go choose a watch of their choice, so we would give them the option to either choose a watch or a $300 cash one-time payment, in addition to 16 hours of leave time. And then, once the employee hits 25 years and above, they will receive 40 hours of personal leave time. This would be a one-time donation at each five-year milestone. It does not change their leave accrual rate. They would receive the 40 hours or the 16 hours, whatever they're entitled to. Um, and then, of course, they would be recognized by the board members at, on a quarterly basis.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Florida, have you calculated what the cost of this would be?
Actually, yes. Today, we're spending, currently, we're spending about $8,000 a year on this program, so this should cut it down to about $6,000.
Commissioner Colson, in terms of addressing your question on cost, all the salaries for all the employees are budgeted for the entire fiscal year. The cost factor will be more giving the employee the time off in terms of productivity rather than actually, because we're already, we're already, that's a full year of this employee's salary, so if an employee meets one of these milestones, yes, there would be a cost that they get that additional 40 hours of leave, let's say for the 25 years and above, or 16 years, 16 hours of 20, 20 years of service, yeah, the department will have a productivity hit, but not a monetary hit, because you've already fully budgeted the value of all those positions for the entire year. Appreciate the work here.
All right, thank you.
We are saving money since we don't have any more session, because we, um...
Well, we're proposing to go back to the reception.
Yeah. We will, we, well, currently, we will, I guess, see what the board decides they want to do. Typically, of course, the receptions have been in the morning, so we will have to invite the employees to be there in the evening, uh, since all the meetings are in the evening.
Yeah, so that, that's a good point. So if you, if you, if you remain with the two-night meetings and we don't have a morning meeting, then we probably wouldn't have the reception, but if you do go to a morning meeting, then we can reach to the reception where, that's one of the disadvantages of two-night meetings. The employees for Employee Service Awards are not recognized by you as the board. You don't have that interface with them, so that's one, one, um, reason to consider going back to a one-morning meeting a month if the board resents.
So if they, if they come for the recognition of the obligated, to pay them...
For an evening meeting, we're thinking yes.
Yes.
It would either be pay them or allow them to earn compensatory time for the time they're there at the meeting. Because it's the work function.
So if, if that, if that, how many, if you, if you, if you, if you, if you, if you always get them, you know?
That is entirely possible. So it would be very difficult to determine how many would be there for the reception to get a great head count, yes. Yes. Uh, at five years, they do not get leave time. They would still continue to get a lapel pin, so they would at least have one county pin and a certificate. So we don't start giving the leave time until they reach the 10-year milestone.
All employees are earning leave time month to month?
Yes.
Even, even those who are one to five years are getting how many hours per month?
Uh, one to five years, they're getting 11 hours per month by the time they hit five years.
So they're still earning leave time? This is just a bonus for their longevity with the county?
And would believe the, the employees are, it's like a...
Yes, we do have employees who tell us now that they don't wear a watch, so this would give them another choice. Um, and there's only so many lapel pins you can wear, I guess, on one jacket, so when you've been here and hit several five-year milestones, that means you've collected quite a few pins. So to change the pins out for leave time, I think the employees would most appreciate it.
Um, I believe we have most, uh, right, you have?
Yes, and we have a second as well.
Madam Chair?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is the Order of Collection to Pitt County Tax Collector, fifteen, twenty-two, two...
Good evening again, Commissioners. Um, I bring you an item for, um, decision. Um, the Order of Collection for, um, to the Pitt County Tax Collector for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022. The Board of Commissioners shall issue an Order of Collection to the Tax Collector for the Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105 321. It is my recommendation for the board to approve and for Madam Chair to sign the Order of Collection for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022.
Move the approval. It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, the Order of Collection, is to ask, is any, are there any questions? Madam Chair?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonnelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I am Jeannie Mack, and I'm the Senior Title Advisor of Global Operations for First American. And I'm here on behalf of my Tennessee office, because, well, they made a mistake in your county. We had a North Carolina attorney agent draft a deed that was recorded in January that showed an excise tax at $112,100, the land value, as opposed to the $450 that should have been charged. So, in accordance of law, we, yes, yes, I know. And so, now, we have gone ahead and we recorded a scribbler's error, and we'd like a refund. And Matt folks.
[inaudible]
Yep.
Madam Chair, just also, if you know, the Register reads as present, should you have any questions for her, although this is not my area in the way. And I can assert my duty that a proper process has been followed the General Statute, the board is so inclined, so he should be refunding the proper procedural matters that he's involved in.
Second item. Remember the second item, we intend to refund the...
Thank you. And there's training on the board now. Yeah.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins? Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonnelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, she's going to come from Kelly, and then she's going to come before us and talk about the North Carolina Railroad Bill, the latest site application.
Thank you. Good to be in front of you again. With another opportunity, we have, the NC Railroad has launched, just launched a program to increase the number and quality of rail-served sites in North Carolina. I believe that this is an unprecedented opportunity and something they have never done before in terms of releasing a request for information to all counties to submit rail sites 50 to 100 acres with high potential for development. And the program will actually match up to 60, or up to $500,000 or 60% of the total cost of the actual project, and that has yet to be determined. We have a short window of time. They just released it, and it's actually due in the middle of August, so they gave a short window of time for people to get their projects together. But we are looking at several sites in Pitt County, looking to submit a request, this request for information, or a submission back to them, to get, again, up to $500,000 or up to 60% of the project cost to develop rail sites. Now, while this is really of particular interest to us, is that we get quite a few industrial prospects that either require or prefer rail-served sites. And as I, in my report earlier noted, that we, again, have a lack of buildings, but we also do not have any ready-to-go rail-served sites in Pitt County. So, this would be an opportunity for us to have more product and be able to respond to more requests. So, they will actually evaluate all of the submissions, choose the most viable sites, and, again, based on the projects submitted, it could be up to half a million dollars with this project. Now, we would have to determine, based on the, the actual site that we choose, what other partners might put in financial support. It could be us, it could be with the town where that site is located, or it could be other partners. That 40% would need to be determined. What we need at this point is just permission to submit the application for the grant and also a letter of support from the county commissioners. It's not a financial support, it's just a letter of support identifying that this is a need in Pitt County and that you support the project. So, I would ask respectfully that you do grant us the opportunity to submit for this opportunity and present us with that letter of support from the commissioners.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, is this the time to bring up passengers rail?
This would be an industrial, so a manufacturer of product or distributor of product.
The reason I brought it up is, if we have a railroad station where we can travel through passenger in addition to whatever they're going to do, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, that, that, that would be something, again, that, yeah, would be another, a different program, but, but this one is actually more for industrial projects.
I, I would like to offer the motion, but I just wanted you to know that I look at every opportunity for progress, development, and that would do it. But I do offer the motion.
Thank you.
Next item, the application, if, if Kelly, the...
Yes, ma'am.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonnelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, Pitt Community College, Dr. Rouse?
Good evening. I brought my backup with me. First of all, Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your support of Pitt Community College throughout the years. We also thank the county manager and his staff for what they've done for Pitt Community College. I'd also like to recognize that tonight, we have with us three of our board members, our Chair, Mr. Gary Evans, we have Mr. Randy Walters and Mr. Lindsey Griffin, as well as VP of Institution Advancement, Mary Ann Cox. Tonight, we're here to see if we can get permission from the Commissioners to use some of our fund balance. So, at this time, we're going to have a very short presentation. I'll ask VP Rick Owens to come forward and talk a little bit about the building, and then also, it'll be followed by Mr. Ricky Brown, our CFO, who'll talk a little bit about the funding. Ricky?
Thank you. Just wanted to provide kind of a quick recap. This is the Center for Student Advancement that's going on campus. If you're coming down Ready Branch Road, it'll be right across from, if you're familiar with campus, the Witcher, or the Whitley Building. There, the intersection of Tice Drive. So, just the tentative location for that. The center is going to be about 28,000 square feet. It's got flexible classrooms, meeting spaces, which is very much needed. It houses the Visions Program, the Veterans and Student Resource Centers. The spaces are essential to provide support for the underserved and at-risk students that we have on campus. It's got the dedicated and private spaces that they need to succeed in those, and then the flexible meeting spaces for the, the larger programs that we can't currently have at one time. The nursing program, for example, has to meet in sections. They can't all get together at the same time just because we're limited on space and even more limited now with some of the distancing requirements. Same thing with new student orientations, and then career fairs, we have to space out throughout the semester. So, these are needed spaces, needed activities that are already taking place on campus. And the reason that we're here tonight, we've seen a lot of fluctuation over the past, really year. Due to COVID-19, the construction costs are, they fluctuate wildly. It's just a wild market, a lot of variability right now. And then, quotes are only good for maybe a week. So, we wanted to come and, and make the request so we could be sure that we have the funding available, because if we don't, we go out to bid, we don't have the funding and need to come make a request, the bid will be expired, we have to go back out through that 30- to 60-day process, and so, I will turn it over to Vice President Brown.
So, good evening. Again, my name is Ricky Brown. I'm the Vice President of Finance and Chief Financial Officer for Pitt Community College. Again, what we'd like to make clear tonight is that, one, we are not asking for any new monies this evening. We are simply asking you to approve us to use our fund balance of $1.8 million of our current county fund balance to be applied to this project. We are also asking for the approval of $479,000 of some special repair monies that we were allocated a couple of years ago from the county. We had a larger balance than that, but we spent some of it down. Currently, we have a balance of $479,000, and we're asking this to be applied to the project as well. Again, the $1.8 million, this is funds that we hold at the college, this is in our bank account from our fund balance. We did meet with Mr. Elliott and Mr. Barnett last week to discuss this proposal. At the point in time, I believe that they figured out that we were not there to ask them for any new monies, but at the time that we were going to use our monies, I think they said we, they could support that plan. So, again, I said that somewhat jokingly, but we did review our numbers with them. We made them aware of our current fund balance, our cash balance, our percent of expense to fund balance, our balance sheet, and they did support that plan. I assume they may have conveyed that to you at this point. So, again, I personally prepared this recommendation for Dr. Rouse. I would have not recommended it if I was not personally comfortable with it. So, again, I am comfortable with this request, and we would like to ask for your approval this evening for this. Thank you.
As I said to Dr. Rouse when he called, we would certainly support him, and you come not asking for money. We would certainly support that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer the motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question. The $479,000 special repair funds money, does that mean that we over-allocated money so you didn't need it for that, or is something going to go unrepaired if this money is diverted?
Handle that one.
So, this was some funding from, if I can call Scott or Mr. Barnett, this was funding that had been in projects that were previously assigned to the college that were reallocated. We had pulled some of that from the SIP funding. In that was to upgrade HVAC controls, to upgrade a chiller, and then to do security, door locks on campus. And then, there was the Vernon White Roof. Vernon White Roof is the only one that remains. Based on the pricing right now, that one's three to four years out. We had gotten pricing pre-COVID. We signed the contract, they got canceled because the material shot through the roof, and it's pretty much tripled. So, that one's...
So, is the answer to that, in three to four years, you're going to come back to us and ask for money for a special repair fund?
Our, our intent is to build back up the fund balance. Our intent would be to build the fund balance back to where we can pull from that.
Your fund balance, where does it come from?
It comes...
Fund balance, of course, is just the... Unspent monies from any county appropriation.
But, that, that's my point. The money that you have in fund balances and that money that comes from the county, because if you get it from the state, you don't spend it, or federal government, you don't spend it, you got to send it back, right? So, this money...
Not entirely. We, we are allowed a percentage of some state monies not to be reverted.
I understand correctly, but the majority of it is from the county, is it not?
This fund balance request is from the county, that's correct.
So, it's, when you say it's not new money, it's money that is unspent that, in my opinion, really ought to come back to the county. And then, if you want to use it again for something else, it ought be re-appropriated. I mean, we had a situation some time ago where money that was left over for a project where it wasn't, the full amount was not spent, and you did the high school, early college building out of that. And I objected to that for the same reason I'm objecting now, that I really think, well, it may be customary that you get to keep the money, because we don't have a requirement that you return it, and it's good stewardship of the dollars, so you didn't spend everything that you were given before. You found a cheaper way of being able to do whatever you needed, but...
Commissioner Coulson, the, the early college high school was out of a bond referendum versus the, what we'll call the current expense, whatever we call them for, the community college. These funds are just, are just like the fund balance Pitt County Schools has.
I can't hear you.
These are just like the funds Pitt County School, Schools has for in current...
I understand that, I object to that, too.
Part, part of the reason they have fund balance is COVID-19, on a couple of different facets, a couple of different levels have created this. Last year, they had about $800,000 in lessened expenses, because they weren't heating and cooling buildings as much, because they weren't in the buildings. They were able, able also to pull down some CARES Act dollars for HVAC controls that allowed that special repairs fund to not have to be spent down as far. So, these monies are going against, I think, a $14 million building. This 2.2 million roughly out of those two amounts together will allow that building to be built. Otherwise, they would be coming to Pitt County Government asking for, because it is our responsibility for their brick and mortar to, to pay that cost as well as to maintain it. And this building really started at a 40,000-square-foot building. They did it after the first time, bids were way high, and they've done due diligence, gone from 40,000-square-foot to 28,000-square-foot building, and are trying to make the best of the situation they can. So, I support the request.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate that. And this just gave me a platform to make that objection again, as you've heard from me many times in the past, as to about the fund balance stuff, where they, that's not come back to the county. Oh, by the way, I'm going to vote for this.
Shoot.
I said, oh, by the way, I am going to vote for this.
As the Commissioner that serves on this board, I would like, and I will have to say that I've never intended to be succeed that they're not as diligent, and have the money, it's in, in video group that I have a government work with or serve with, and not. They buy the money to get something done, and then when they get money, then somewhere else they buy money to get that thing done, so then they push that over there to another project. So, thank you for doing the due diligence, I would like to vote for this. And then, I'd like to offer the question.
I believe we have the most important floor. Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonnelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to say to the Commissioners, thank you for approving this use of the funds. I assure you that it will be used in a manner that is taking care of what we need to do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Adam. Deputy in merger revision, Brian Barnett, our deputy commissioner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Board of Commissioners. I bring for you tonight a request to look at our year-end revisions policy. Well, it's actually a resolution that you all passed. Each, each June, you guys...
Each, each June, you guys pass a resolution that allows staff to look at our year-end budget amendments, to make any type of corrections that we need to make to close out the year. I'm asking for an amendment to that resolution, because we cap the amount at a hundred thousand dollars. And as you can see by what's presented on the screen tonight, we have some very large numbers that we need to move around. All the numbers that you see presented tonight are not new numbers. These are projects that we have brought to you in the past that were either reimbursements for other projects or part of the CARES Act. But for year-end closing, we're in our year-end period right now, and we're able to look back on the prior year. And to be able to put these funds in the appropriate place within our fund structure, it would require you all to revise the existing resolution. So I'm asking tonight to revise that resolution to allow us to make these budget transfers, to put the money in the appropriate location.
Madam Chairwoman, can I ask you a question? Brian, in the resolution, we captured three things, the Warren Farm, Agent Cox Medical School, and CARES Act. Is the General Fund of Public Health, is that CARES Act per se, do we need to add those two to this resolution?
So they're part of the CARES Act, the last two items you see. The CARES Act allowed us to, the very last one, we actually got ahead of the game, and we moved the money into the General Fund. It really, it should have stayed in the CARES Act fund. And then the four hundred and seventy-six thousand, as you may recall, originally the CARES Act was set to end on December thirty-first, but that was extended for another year. So we had actually set up funding in the Public Health Fund to pay for CARES item-related expenses. So technically speaking, if we don't do a transfer, we'll be in violation, because we were actually being proactive, and the federal government changed that requirement. So actually, all of my forms and requests that we've submitted did not include that four hundred and seventy-six. So to properly account for it, I need to move the money from the General Fund to the Public Health Fund.
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins? Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have a recommendation to City Greenville to appoint the City Clerk Valerie Schweiger to this commission.
Vice Chair Floyd Huggins? I'm sorry, Chair Floyd Huggins. Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes seven one.
Yes, a recommendation to appoint Mayor Thorsten Brown?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins? Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, recommendation to appoint a position of the optometrist, Dr. Scott McIntosh, and at large, Representative Mr. Rex Green.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we have Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ward, you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to say that on July the thirty-first, the Bethel Advocacy Committee will be having a cleanup in the town of Bethel, and all of you want to come and bring your tools, they'd be happy to have you. Also, on, this coming Thursday, I asked Greenlamp to provide a pop-up Amazon giveaway, and it will be at Welcome Middle School, starts at nine. So you're all invited.
Madam Chair, is, I thought originally that we were going to have a comment from staff, from Scott during his manager's report, that had to do with an update on the statute. But that was dependent upon a meeting that I was going to have with the Sons Confederate Veterans. And there's some talk amongst the community that is being stalled, that it's being delayed inappropriately, that there's shenanigans going on, and I'd like to just reiterate note, none of that is true. We were supposed to meet not this last Thursday, but Thursday before, but with the hurricane, their, their leader decided to postpone it a week, so I didn't meet with them until Thursday evening, this last Thursday evening. Ephraim Smith was also present, and the, the general conversation was, is, was the entire group, the local group, not the state, but the local group, were they there and were they in favor of acquisition of the statute? And it was unanimous. They all were. And Ephraim Smith was also still willing to put it on his property. And so I don't think that we really need to call the relocation committee back together, but I don't think we need to disband it yet either until this finally gets resolved. There was some talk about potentially getting insurance for the statute, which I'm not sure that they're going to be able to find any insurance. And the members there realized that it'd be, you might get insured for lightning strike, earthquake, or flood, but rioting's probably not going to be something they're going to find insurance for. But in any case, they were still willing to go ahead with it. And there was one little bugaboo with Ephraim, that the original proposed lease agreement, he didn't like it. And I, and I didn't get to meet with him specifically to find out what was it that he did not like about it. But today, a very simple, one-page lease was presented to Jackie Haddock, who is the commander of the local group, and he is going to meet with Ephraim, I think, tomorrow. And it, the, that document has already been forwarded to Ephraim, and hopefully Ephraim will look at it, and he will agree that this is simple enough, and yes, the only thing that would need to be added to this is a, is an actual map of where, where the place is going to be. So I just want to, you know, kill any talk that it's not moving forward. It is actively moving forward. It is not stalled. Dragging her feet? Yes.
I think it was shenanigans.
Well, there, in a, in a community, there's a little bit stronger words than...
Nothing other than to echo that I fully trust Commissioner Coulson, that there are no backroom shenanigans going on, but, and proud to sit on that unified committee to put forth a calculated campaign in a better place, serve on the board, Commissioner Coulson up front. Proud to serve with each and every one of you to make it count a little bit better.
Well, thank you all. At this time, we have a closed session.
Don't move.
I'm going to read the basis first and then the... Okay, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.1184, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body. Also under 143318.1183, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body, and we urge you to preserve that attorney-client privilege with the public body. And when we speak about particular lawsuits that have been filed, we have to name those as well. And one of the matters that we will discuss under attorney-client privilege relates to the lawsuit of Pitt County versus multiple opioid distributor manufacturers, McKesson, Maris, Spurgit, Cardinal Health, Reed Farm, and others. We are also going to close session under 143318.1186, which is personnel, and also under 143318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information as you review the content of your closed sessionings. With that, if you are ready, we'll park and call it off.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn? Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward? Motion passes unanimously.